I just want to remind everybody that the meeting is recorded. So we will begin with our agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
I make that motion.
Do you have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The meeting minutes, did everyone, Isaac, yes?
So because you don't have a copy of the minutes, you can postpone those till next time if you like.
Okay.
We don't have a typed copy. If you're more comfortable waiting, that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Okay, well, let's wait till the next meeting. So we will move on to public comments. Do we have anybody in the audience for public comment tonight? Okay, we will move on. All right, well, we have a new member, Ian Holesworth. So, welcome to the committee. Do you want to take a minute to introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Ian Holesworth. I've been a community member in Scapus for about 11 years now. Live on a small 15 acre farm with my wife and we have three children, all in the Scapus School District. I am a registered landscape architect. Have been working downtown and in that profession for close to 20 years now, on all sorts of scales from large community master plans down to very small urban plazas, mostly in the, I would say, the public sector, not so much in the private sector. I'm really excited to work with this group and city to provide my expertise or whatever to this group and help this park system as great as it is and better than it is.
Great, thanks, we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to MIG introductions. We have Darcy tonight. Welcome.
Thank you. Nice to be with you here tonight. I am a planner with MIG APG and I typically introduce myself as a project manager, principal. It's a little new for me, being part of MIG. So I recently came over from my own firm, Angela Planning Group. So I now have a much bigger group of colleagues in the Portland area and I'm super excited to be part of this plan. I also say that I'm from, previously from Angela Planning Group because I've worked in Scapus on a couple of different projects over the years, including your transportation system plan and then, super recently, your housing needs analysis. So, I'm really excited about this project because I get to keep working in Scapus. So, not just me on this team. And so I do want to kind of introduce in abstention my colleagues who are working hard on this project. Cindy Mendoza, she's a parks planner, a certified parks planner. Chris Frank, she's a landscape architect, is on our team. Lauren Scott's a project associate. All of these colleagues, they have a really long history with parks planning and it's just a crackerjack team from that technical perspective. Ryan Mattow is also another person on our team. He's a public outreach specialist, especially digital engagement. So right now, he just gave me, before I left today, the link to our survey, public survey, that will be up and running very shortly for the city. So we'll get to that a little bit later, too. I have a couple of other colleagues that are working on the plan. You might not see their names, so I won't introduce them. But all that to say, as a project manager, I am really just keeping things going and I'm your conduit, really, to all that good information, working with city staff, making sure that you have what you need to understand and participate in the project, making sure your city council, your planning commission, your citizens really can participate and feel like they have the information and make some good decisions moving forward. So with that, we do have a little presentation. It's gonna be pretty short. Hopefully it'll leave some time for discussion and definitely any questions that you might have. So the next slide is just really what we're gonna cover by way of introduction. Not that fast, but, there we go. Project objectives, why are we doing this now? You know, what really is prompting this update of a fairly recent plan? Process and deliverables, your participation in the project, and then the first kind of piece of substantive materials that we've put together, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, challenges, and then what's coming up next for the project? So we can go to the next slide. So these are kind of the project objectives and really, what's differentiating this process from the work that you've been doing most recently is really, this is gonna be a holistic look at your park system. You're really looking, yes, to the future, making sure that, you know, that your planned growth, your increase in residential development, that that's gonna be also supported by your park system. So, you can read those things there. I'm noticing our text is a little bit smaller. I'll do better next time, make that a little bit larger. So what's really driving the project? It's really your investment strategy, of which you don't have a very robust one right now in your current parks plan. So we're really looking at the capital improvement projects and making sure that you have a better idea of project cost, long-term investment strategy, you know, really giving you the tools to make some good decisions about your investments. Obviously, you don't have unlimited funds for parks. How do you make those dollars go farther? What other funding strategies are out there for your community? So, this list is just some of the things that we've noticed in your current plan, that it doesn't do a good enough job for you, really, to go forward and do that planning. And of course, your growth is something that we're acutely aware of. You have new parks, new properties that you're planning for. So all these things have come to fruition and really need a more robust plan moving forward. So that's what we're hoping to do, is to provide that plan for you. The next slide is just the process slide. You have the slide and, yeah, again, could use a little larger text. I'm glad you have it in a paper copy here. So we've really gone through phase one already, at least the project team has. We started off with a tour with city staff, with Hughle and Dave, just walking the properties, basically getting access to, on the ground, to the trails and your parks, to the extent we could, a little hard with Vista, but... So we did that. We've done an update of the inventory, some of which is sort of in your strengths, weaknesses piece, really what's on the ground already today. And so we have a spreadsheet, basically, that updates the inventory that the city currently had or had before we came onboard. We're heading into phase two now, you know, looking at, you know, well, I'm getting ahead of myself. It's about a year-long process. It's not very long. It's really kind of tapped off with your annual town meeting in the spring. We will have really some robust recommendations at that point in time. It won't be a complete plan, but we'll have a lot of information to share with the public at that point. We're gonna be checking in with you all another four times. So not a lot, but definitely at process points where we'll need some direction, we'll want to make sure that we're on the right path. We'll ask you for your consideration on policy, for example, or prioritization of projects, et cetera. So we're entering now into the second phase. We'll talk about outreach a little bit later because we're coming up to, as I mentioned, an online survey. And the next kind of piece of work that we're gonna be doing, and again, we're actually starting it right now, is a level of service analysis that's really looking at the sufficiency of parkland in terms of population. Usually it's, you know, number of acres per 1,000 residents or per number of people, you know, what do these parks really serve? So some standardization by which to kind of compare what you have and what you may need for your population, as it is today and also in the future. And then, part of that is an accessibility analysis. So where are your parks located in relation to where your residents are? And, you know, that's typically based on a half mile or a 10-minute walking distance. And that really kind of gives us a spatial analysis. Like, here's where you are well-served and here's where you're less well-served. And that's information that we'll be bringing back to you in November. So the next slide, this probably, I'm sorry, have any questions? Okay. Happy to take questions as I go along. If there's something that pops right up, this is pretty informal, but... These roles and responsibilities really are just pretty, you know, they're not specific to you necessarily. They're pretty much what any ad hoc committee would be asked to do. You're a standing committee, which is a little bit different. But for this particular project, you know, we're really looking for your review of materials, making sure that they're complete, that they're inclusive of your knowledge and reflect your community, that we haven't forgotten anything, that things are accurate, that the things are explained well, you know, that they're not too technical or don't seem to make sense for the conclusions we're making, for example. Advice, direction, definitely. We come into your community as really technicians. So we have a really good technical base for doing parks planning, but that doesn't mean that that means Scapus' needs or, you know, maybe we're suggesting a standard that isn't rigorous enough for your community, you know. So we will bring you information and you'll have to help us kind of right-size it, if you will, you know, tailor it to your community. And certainly, you know, raising questions all along. So if you have the question, then there's, you know, any other number of community members that are gonna have the same question. So if we can answer it for you and make sure we know that that is something that needs to be answered for Scapus, then that's just, that helps us have a much better process and ultimately, a better product that's gonna be useful. So, on the next slide, this is what we looked at. So it's a map that city staff pulled together for us. This is your existing park system. We are going to, basically it's just foundational, right? We're trying to gather information and making sure that it's accurate. And, you know, we'll be working, creating a GIS layer that actually is your park system layer that you can have moving forward. And you'll have specific information, you know, on each park, for example. As part of our kind of reconnaissance, you know, yes, the tour, the inventory, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, challenges. So that's kind of where we're at. We've just built sort of a base layer of our understanding of the system. And as part of that, for each of those properties, including the trail and the trailhead, you know, we have done an assessment as outsiders, like, this is what we observed and we presented that to you. And at the end of that document, you know, we did kind of a roll-up of like, yep, generally, this is what we're seeing. And so I just put a couple of slides together, again, based on those observations. So if you can advance the slide. So, and again, if you've read the materials, you've already kind of seen what we came up with. But from my perspective, you really have a lot of attractive sites, right? That they're really, it's lovely, lovely properties, developed properties where you do have improvements, you know, playgrounds, basketball courts. They're just well-maintained and they're very inviting, from, again, an outsider's perspective. Some of the weaknesses is that you don't have kind of the full complement of types of activities, especially for younger or youth, yes, little kids, but those kind of teenage years, like, what is there to do? Skate park's a good example of that. And every time I've visited, there's always kids hanging out at that, not necessarily skateboarding, but hanging out at the park bench and under the tree, which is kind of cool. The next slide, the opportunities and challenges. Really, the biggest opportunity is you've got lots of land to expand uses, right? You have a lot of real estate to play with and really expand the uses that your community might enjoy. The flip side of that, of course, is the cost of maintaining the property that you have, whether that's developed or it's a natural, you know, spaces. And of course, improvements are costly. So that's just some of our observations. And I want to turn over the mic to you and hear your observations, particularly if you feel like something wasn't captured in our work or is like, you thought that was a strength? Why is that a strength? We find that a liability, you know. So we can talk about that a little bit. But I think the idea is really just to make sure that we haven't missed something, right, in our observations. So this, I rephrased it a little bit. Instead of opportunities and challenges, it's really like, of the work that we're gonna do together, really, in the next year or so, what would those positive outcomes be? Whatever comes to mind, again, if you want to talk about the specific park or the park system in general, or just really like, as a consultant, please, please do this because it drives us crazy when consultants don't. That's fine, anything you want to throw at me is great. And then on the other side of it, you know, what are the hurdles to achieving what you do want to see out of this project?
Anyone like to go first? Kim, you had some good examples. Would you like to begin?
Sure, thank you. So that was a great presentation and I just want to say, I'm so glad to have you here as part of this process. So Isaac had asked us to identify three challenges, three opportunities, and some stakeholders. I won't go through the stakeholders because it's a long list. We can get to that. But three top challenges. So I think we are gonna face a challenge as a community to develop three properties, Grabhorn, Chapman, and Vista, all within a reasonable timeframe. So I think if you guys could take that into consideration and offer up some suggestions as to how we go about that, because they all offer very unique opportunities. And I think the community is interested in seeing all of those kind of come to, you know, a place of where we can be utilizing it as a community, like here within the relative near timeframe. As you pointed out, we have a lack of amenities, I think, for all age groups in the parks compared with other cities of our size. And I think one of the real constraints, and I know that we're looking at parks here, but we are the Parks and Rec Committee. We have no rec center. And so I don't know if that can become part of the purview of this effort is to look at, you know, how we perhaps develop a rec center or a network of recreation opportunities within the community, absent of a rec center. So I've been a big advocate of that. Our top three opportunities, I think we do, as you said, we've got some really great parcels of land available. So how do we look at maybe doing more small parcels, like pocket parks, within the developments that we have here? I would love to look at interconnectedness of parks and the walking biking system. And I recently saw a presentation of, someone had proposed a bike beltway around the town, right? Like, we have this problem of Highway 30, which is really not conducive to biking and that's our main thoroughfare. But is there the potential to build a bike beltway around the town? I would love to look at that. And then, just preserving our green spaces, particularly in our floodplain spaces. I know a lot of cities have been buying up land to, like, create park and greenway spaces where it might not be like conducive to development, you know, like, maybe identifying some of those lands. So those would be like the top three challenges and opportunities that I would love for this plan to look at. Thank you.
So I could, do you want me to comment?
Go ahead, JJ.
Okay, great. So that was an excellent presentation. Thank you so much for that. You know, I think that there are some real opportunities. And frankly, the biggest challenge that we have is money. You know, it's, all of the parks that have been purchased or have been developed extensively have been done through grants or with other funds available. And so there's really limited funds available to really expand usage of those parks. And so having some kind of financial structure in place to allow us to actually pay for these things would be great. I am like an original member of this committee and when we did the master plan years back, you know, it was all pretty much blue sky. We had all these great ideas, but there's just no money there. And I think that, you know, that's a real concern. And we talked about, you know, creating a park and rec district, you know, looking at other ways to generate revenue. But that's gonna be, that's gonna be a big piece of this. So that's what I gotta say.
Thank you, JJ. And Isaac, I can't see if like Andrew has his hand raised or...
I wasn't sure, no.
Okay. All right, Andrew, since I, do you have anything that you'd like to comment? Since I can't see if you end up doing raising your hand.
I'm watching.
Okay.
I can see I'm mine, she's, I just wasn't sure she was on the present.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Some of the thoughts that I had, and I completely agree with everything that JJ and Kim have stated. Those are all things that we would absolutely like to work on. One of the things that we talked about when we were looking at Grabhorn and then we've brought up a few times over the course of my time here is, and it's also mentioned in your SWOT analysis, is partnering with the school district. We do have a lot of, I think, missed opportunities by sharing land. And especially like when we're looking at turf fields, would it make sense to do turf fields in somewhere, like a city-owned field? Or would it make more sense to try to partner with the school district and put turf fields there? And so that's something that, like, if you guys have experience with, Paul has brought some great data to us on other cities that have partnered with school districts. But, and that may be beyond the scope of this planning, but I think if we had the opportunity to build that within this master plan, I think that would be very, very helpful. You have done a lot of research. Do you have anything to add to that, Paul?
That was excellent, thank you.
Okay. I totally agree, a lack of funding for parks. I think we have a lack of inclusive play equipment and accessibility for our parks. I also saw that noted in here, but that's something that we have talked about. Harper's Playground, right in Portland, has done some beautiful, beautiful playgrounds that are just so fun, have open constant plays and are so accessible. We had somebody on our committee previously who had partnered with, who had worked with Harper's Playground. So I think it's seeing at least pieces of those things in our parks would be absolutely wonderful and really an asset to our community. Those were like the biggest things, I think. Kim really commented.
One thing?
Yes.
I'm gonna start by classifying. The school has now put in a turf field. So maybe in your past, you hadn't had that updated. The school district has had a turf available.
I guess if I was gonna say what are our biggest opportunities, I think the city's done a nice job of acquiring property over the last five, six years. Chapman Landing and basically, seven, eight years ago, the city didn't even know this existed, this property up on the hill. Then, Conley's like three years old and the Grabhorn Properties owned it about three, four years, so...
Great job, Mike.
Yeah, so they've done a good job of acquiring property, but, and the original plan was done by a rare student from University of Oregon because the city didn't have the staff. So I think the biggest challenge is how are you gonna fund some of this stuff? Because if you fund a park guy, are you not gonna be able to fund a police officer? And that's the kind of challenge that city faces. So helping, one of the outcomes, if you can help us figure out a methodology to one dependable STC system, so that if we figure out all these needs and we can kind of figure out how much it costs so that we can, if you have, the city can address maybe changing that STC to help fund some of the improvements. And then two, long-term way to fund parks is, I mean, at the end of the day, that's the number one issue because I think we have a great assets, need money and resources. So that's, I think this is a fun process.
Isaac?
Kim has her hand up.
Oh, Kim?
Yeah, I concur with all of Mike's statements about the need to look at funding. But going back to the relationship with the school district, and Paul had raised this, as Cara mentioned, you know, what form of intergovernmental agreements can we make with the school district? I would love to see what the options are with that so that we can begin to, you know, more formally collaborate with the other largest public entity within our city.
Yes. Mike?
I just wanted to say that I think a community center is really a huge need and, you know, there's opportunities. Actually, a handful of years back, the city was working with the school district when Jupe was the superintendent. And there was a lot of discussion about mid-school becoming a joint office facility and maybe a place, maybe the city would take over some of the facilities there and manage them as park facilities. And that, there was a lot of excitement around that concept, but then he left and there's been a lot of trouble with that. But I think if we can kind of figure that out, too, this plan would be great.
I agree.
Oh, yeah, so going back on that. So a lot of cities have shared use agreements. City Seattle has one, San Diego has one. And basically, what it sets forth is that the mechanism to be able to share these facilities. Right now, we don't have that. So, you know, the high school has their stuff and we got our stuff and then, you know, our leagues are kind of in the middle trying to figure it out. We've brought it up to the city, but I think it was part of the plan it might get a little more traction. Secondarily, so part of my stuff, I'd like to see a trail plan. Number one is that grants, transportation dollars can be used on trail plans and we have a relatively small city limits. And if we could interconnect our city with a trail system, and remember, trails are, can be a combination of paved, unpaved, sidewalks in some portions, whatever. One thing that I think people aren't realizing is that e-bikes are coming incredibly quick. I spent some time in Worcester, B.C., and they have an interconnected system there and everybody's on e-bikes and everyone's just cruising around on e-bikes. And it's gonna come, they're getting cheaper every day and it would be nice to work the trail plan into the parks master plan, especially if you could get from one park to another in each quadrant. On goals of unfunding, we've seen some amazing things happen in our city, our little town here, with the field turf. We had, it was an idea. We were told it was, it'd be too expensive and somehow, the citizens came up with the money to put it in. And this was our field turf field here at the high school. I know JJ's talked about this a lot as well and she does an amazing job with the things that she does. We'd like to create a mechanism that we can harness some of this expertise that we have with some of the citizens we have. So for instance, if we needed to come up with $100,000 for Chapman Landing, how do we get that done? Because we as a group kind of talk about it, but we really don't have a mechanism to do that. And I know that the skill set is there internally and externally to get that stuff happening. So it just happened with the field turf. Lastly is, the big question for me is, you know, you kind of went over everything we have already, which is great, but where do we talk about who do we want to be, you know, as a town? Fayetteville, Arkansas, for instance, said, "We're gonna be known as a town that embraces the outdoors." And so they said that they were gonna have trails that interconnect and being able to bike from every neighborhood to a trailhead, for instance. Other cities like Hood River have done other things where, us as a town, we've talked about, and we were in the economic development meeting today, that tourism is an economic driver. So, and we know that we have outdoor resources here. So how does that play into the parks master plan? That's what I'd like to know. Secondarily, when we look at our amenities list, does that affect our amenities list? Like, do we put a bike park in, for instance? Because bike parks are extremely popular with, you know, 14 to 18-year-olds. It's like the... It's like the newest thing out there. At the same time, you know, we've got other amenities lists that, you know, we've talked about for a long time, pickleball, disc golf, whatever, which are these up and coming sports that aren't necessarily what people think about when they think about parks all the time. You know, they might think, okay, we're gonna have a basketball court and softball field, whatever. So of course the outreach is important, but the bigger picture to me is, who do we want to be? And can we work with the Economic Development Committee and then the 50-year plan to say, hey, you know, a big part of what we're gonna be is this, and that's where the parks plan should kind of come in? Because we have all these plans going on at once. So I'm just putting this out as at the group, I don't have the answer for it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Go ahead, Jeanette.
Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, thank you, Darcy, for coming and presenting. But I did hear in your initial, you did mention that you, your plan is to come up with cost projections and strategies, right? So a lot of what Paul was saying, you're gonna have suggestions on how we can implement all of this and also cost. So I do appreciate that. And my question is also, I'm sure you already thought about it, how does this plan, the parks, recs, or the master plan align with the 50-year? And Paul, you mentioned that as well. So that's just, I know this is just the beginning, right? So we'll hopefully have those answers at the end.
Yes.
Okay.
So it is a little curious because I'm, I'm used to looking in 20-year increments, like with your transportation system master plan and your housing needs analysis, and clearly your 50-year plan projects further out. And the crystal ball gets a little bit, little bit more murky, you know, the data gets a little bit stale when you start, you know, projecting further out. But it definitely looks like, you know, the city is growing and will need to look beyond the 20-year, beyond the current urban growth boundary. So the most immediate assessment really is gonna look at what you currently have within your urban growth boundary, where the housing is, where the available land is, which we've done that analysis already with the housing needs analysis, so we have that. And then it's a matter of putting a standard to that data that relates to parks, right? So the real baseline is, you know, what you have, but where is it and how is it serving the population that's in its really immediate vicinity? Because again, you have a, I believe your city council does have a standard or a objective to have, you know, the population within a certain minute walk, right? I believe it's five minutes, the industry standard is kind of 10, but regardless, you know, you'll have some kind of assessment like, oh, yeah, we're doing pretty, pretty well in the northeast quadrant, not so good in the southeast, especially if we take away the high school. So, you know, just to kind of have a baseline of just like, oh, okay, well, if you're using those standards, then yeah, we have some deficits or we have some challenges or opportunities. With the 50-year, you're gonna start looking beyond, you know, your current urban growth boundary. And that's, you know, where that matches up really is, okay, we know we have inside the urban growth boundary, we know where the opportunities are outside the urban growth boundary, what does that mean for parks? Will that park, will Vista serve, right? Because it's close enough to what's going on in the northwest. We'll be able to help you make some of those like, mm, yeah, okay, we might be good there, we're clearly not, not as well parked where we think we're gonna be growing in the 50-year timeframe. So that will help. On the, the other thing that I wanted to emphasize is, we'll also help the community prioritize, right? So you've talked about all the assets, you've talked about all the good ideas. We can help you prioritize really what you can pay for, when you can pay for it, and why would you want to elevate that particular project? It might be because you are underparked in that area, it might be because you have a funding opportunity that is more immediate and accessible, you know, within a shorter timeframe. Whatever those things might be, I think that's, that's really the, what the benefit of going through this exercise is, is that that's, that's like, right, okay, we all decided that was a pretty good way to prioritize. We all decided that, yeah, these are the funding opportunities or the taxing, the grants, however it is that it comes out. And based on that, you can start making some decisions that are supportable. You know, not everybody might like those decisions, but they are supportable. And again, your city council will have the final say, right?
Thank you. Kim?
Yeah, so I think Councilor Santiago's question is a really good question about how it fits in with the 50-year plan, but I certainly don't think that this exercise needs to be that forward casting. So I guess I would ask, you know, what is, I guess, the term of the forecasting that we're looking at? And this is a question to Isaac and maybe also the consultant. Are we looking at like this is a parks' master plan for the next 10 years, the next 20 years? What's our timeframe?
That's also a very good question. I know that we have the data for 20-year projections from the housing needs analysis. As far as a parks' plan, again, one that's really focused on implementation, you are looking more short-term, like the five to 10-year. Again, I think if those projects that are gonna fall outside of that five, 10-year time horizon, you'll still have that bucket, but you'll know they're further out. So that's a little bit of a vague answer because I've had this conversation with Cindy Mendoza, who's our certified parks planner, and she's thinking much shorter term, and I, of course, was thinking 20 years. So I hope to answer that question a little bit more definitively as we get into kind of the next phase of work, but...
Well, but I kind of like that answer because I think we need some relatively quick action on our parks' planning. So if this is a five, 10-year plan, I'm all in favor of that. And it certainly does then fit in with our larger 50-year plan, but I think we should define our kind of timeframe.
If I can just interject, and I apologize, I don't know how to raise my hand on the phone. And I think these are all really good points. One thing that I think needs to also be brought up is the fact that we need to acknowledge climate change and how that is actually going to affect people using parks. So having covered picnic areas, having additional shade, you know, not only in the summertime will be pleasant, but for some people that don't have air conditioning or, you know, are struggling in their homes, gives them, gives them a place to go to where they can cool off or, you know, we've got our splash park, but, you know, thinking about that as well, you know, and I, you know, and I've been doing movies in the parks at Heritage Park for five years now, and this last year was really great, but we were also really fortunate that we had really nice weather during the 100-year celebration, you know, it was on one of those days when we had massive, we had that massive heat dome. So, I mean, that really needs, and that's, you know, that's not 10 years out, it's happening now. So I think that needs to really be put into the process as well.
Thank you, JJ. Did you have a comment on that?
No, I don't think we've heard it from Ian yet, so I was just wondering.
Yeah, Ian. Yeah, I was gonna try to jump in here. I agree with the majority of what's been said here at this roundtable so far. I do believe the city has a great opportunity in the 50-year vision to leverage what will come out of this park master plan, not so much the park master plan leveraging what comes out of the 50-year. But city is in a unique position to be able to really leverage what the parks offer to the surrounding neighborhoods. Maybe there's a change in kind of land use or whatever comes from it, but it's not necessarily, in my opinion, role for the parks' plan to govern anything in the 50-year plan, I think it's a vice versa. And I think the parks' plan is a really good opportunity to help that vision, but doesn't necessarily need to be any kind of driver or jump so far ahead and need to look out 50 years for the parks, because we all know that we're doing is looking for relatively short-term improvements, prioritizing those improvements much faster than a 50-year vision plan would ever try to look out towards. So I want to bring it back, talk about a few of the challenges and opportunities that I see. As far as opportunities, we have a lot of open space in our parks now, a lot of green space, a lot of lawn being mowed. I think that that's an opportunity for us to be able to include many of the amenities that we heard about earlier that our system doesn't have to date, without having to fully invest all the time in a new park. So I think we have a lot of ability to add to our park system, the current land that we have now, and create more robust opportunities that we aren't out there now. I think we have a great opportunity to tie into a pretty wonderful trail system in the Crown Zellerbach, which has a reasonable significance, reaching all the way, you know, out to Vernonia and whatnot. And there's other opportunities that maybe we're not looking at that are, I think we're focused within our city boundaries, urban growth boundary, but there's opportunities potentially to look, maybe this is more 50-year visioning, but what does that mean going south? Can we get a trail system that takes us all the way to Portland or to Forest Park? How can we further leverage this great trail we have now? And then also, how does that trail system bring it back to this parks' master plan right now? How does that trail we have now tie into our existing parks? To further leverage, to further make this green belt that was talked about earlier, to get on your bike and ride Crown Zellerbach and then jump into some other parks with the city, be able to utilize whole framework of the town on your bike, that would be really amazing, and I think we have that opportunity, at least to look at it right now. I do second the opportunity to utilize and work with the school system to maximize their amenities that they have, particularly on the youth sports side of things, because they do have some wonderful facilities that doesn't have to solely rely on the backs of the park system. One of the challenges I see is how do we best utilize our parks in the wet season? I think I heard one of the members here talk about covered area. We don't have a covered play area, one in the school system, and it's really underwhelming. So I think we need to look at opportunities in wet or super hot times, when, how could people use our parks? Concomley Park has a really great picnic area, but I wouldn't say any of our other parks have such things. And then going back to this comment about who we are as a city, really think that civic spaces create a wonderful heart and like a heartbeat of the city, and I don't think we have one in this town. I think Heritage Park does a decent job of kind of tying everything together, it's near the library and get away from where we're standing, but really not set up as a functional space or urban or civic gathering. Veterans Park, we had run with Neil a few weeks ago, I was there, the tents were set up on a slope in the grass, there's no civic urban space at Veterans Park either. I think that's like, you get to the heart of what the community is, not only is there a message of what we want out of our park system to communicate what our community is, but we need a place in our community we can all gather. That's something I think is, is a challenge to this parks' master plan, add into the plan.
Thank you. Mike?
I think one of the things that we need to really acknowledge and recognize is that we, there's a lot of our older parts of town that were built in the 60s, 70s, there's no parks, no sidewalks, and it's really, it'd be nice to have parks in the southeast part of town where we can take down homes, I mean, it's not necessarily realistic. But that said, there's a lot of established neighborhoods that have small pieces of city property up by the water tower, the water treatment facility where you can put pocket parks, and they're low-hanging fruits and it helps kind of fill in those gaps, those neighborhoods. So hopefully we can kind of identify those kind of opportunities possible. And I, you know, I kind of wanted to also say that I think, trying to take a look at our transportation system and identify different areas so we can build biking lanes in our existing streets, that's kind of a low-hanging fruit opportunity that it'd really, it'd be really nice to be able to connect to Crown Zee Trail in all of our neighborhoods. The city's doing a nice job of infilling sidewalks, but I think trying to do some bike lanes would be really a nice addition.
You, Mike? Brian, do you have anything that you'd like to add tonight?
Probably just, one of the challenges I notice is priority-wise...
Speak into your mic.
Sorry. Is that priority-wise, I think sometimes that we've, we've had some parks that we've been working on, like Vista, but then all of a sudden here's this new Grabhorn property and then we forget about the Center Park, it just gets pushed out to the wayside. It's actually probably a lower cost to develop that than what we were planning for Grabhorn. And I don't know where that, I know sometimes we got, it was a good opportunity to take advantage of that, but then, or do we come back to these other parks to develop them? Miller Park's kind of the same way, they had some ideas for that and it got pushed out the wayside and, you know, where we stand, you know, if we got, already said in the master plan for the five, 10 years, how do these other parks get dumped in there and they weren't a part of that plan? So we're going against what we had already approved. You know, that's, that's the only, only danger part there, you know? I know there's, should, should have some flexibility in there, but you know, we're getting all this new property and what's happening is we're getting all this new property, well now we don't got a budget to maintain it. And my bike club, we've got almost the same problem, we've got more trails now, but we get the manpower to man it, to maintain it, and we're starting to run into that same issue because we're actually paying people to build trails because we just don't got enough, got a lot of members, but don't got a lot of volunteers. And it's kind of the same way, you know, volunteers is money for parks, and it's people and, you know, one, one, two guys are probably getting worked it out right now, so it is. So that's, that's my, my main concern is like the priority-wise is kind of pushed around a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Yep.
So just kind of addressing Brian's questions, how I see, and I know that, Darcy, you said the plan, I didn't know there wasn't a timeframe, you're saying 20, but maybe five to 10. So I, I think that the plan in general should be a great, just when it finishes, and see it just a strategic plan for this, for this committee to move forward. Maybe you won't get all those parks done five to 10 years, right? But, you know, to your point, you will have kind of like a list, this is what we need to do, and by MIG's recommendations, they will kind of say, well, strategically, this should be either the, the order of development because of cost, because of whatever you guys come up with, but that's how I see it. It might be five, 10 years, but it could be a longer plan that this committee can use down the line.
I should definitely clarify, it's not a plan for parks' completion and full development of all parks' land, for sure, right? And in fact, it really will be based on, it will be needs-based, right? So right now, I think, you know, again, you've got some really amazing pieces of property that, you know, I can definitely let my imagination run wild with what could actually happen there. But do you really know what your community needs, right? Based on age, based on location, economic status, how they use your park system today, right? And what they find is not, not there for them in the community and they have to go elsewhere to do, to do the activity they want to do. So that's, I think, I think that's a pretty good segue, and I know we're getting a little bit late into the hour to talk a little bit about the public outreach piece, if that's...
Can I take Kim's comment first? And then we can head right into that. Kim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I would really hope that like economic modeling is part of this exercise. So if we can't develop Chapman, Vista and Grabhorn within 10 years, that's a miss. Like, I think we can do that, and maybe it's not within the current budget structure, but I would hope that this process could maybe bring to us different funding mechanisms and options to make that a reality. I would like to see all of those parks developed within the next five years.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Would you like to segue into...
Yes. So the, the final slide is just what's, what's next and what we have been working on with staff, kind of based on our review of your past surveys, community surveys, both park-specific as well as more general as part of your, your annual meeting, your annual community meeting. We've just kind of seen what's been asked, how it's been asked, some... We've just kind of seen what's been asked, how it's been asked, some of the results from those earlier surveys. And we've developed a survey for this process. Again, it's, it's holistic, it's really looking at the whole system, if you will. But really from the community lens, like where, where, where are the parks that you use? How close are you to those parks? What's missing in those parks? Those type of questions, really. So that is going to be, well, actually, the link and the QR code is going to be in the November newsletter, city newsletter. And by the time I believe that's in people's hands or very close to it, we'll have the, the questions up and running. So right now, if you use that link, it says it's coming, you know, tune back in. But that will soon be available. So that's one way we're going to kind of get more feedback on what, what are the needs? What is the community's interest in parks and, and what's kind of missing? The other thing that we have in the works is really an in-person, we call pop-up event. It's, it's small, but it's a way to interact with folks that might not know that this update is happening. And that we can try to get some good feedback based on the survey, but, but much shorter. You know, maybe five questions from the survey will expand into a short exercise or some probing questions. We can talk to somebody in person. And the first, we've, we've missed our opportunity for the summer, unfortunately. So the farmer's market's out and, you know, we've, things have passed us by, but we're going to try to find some ways to. You know, at least shake some hands and, and talk to folks about this process. So the first one is on the 28th, the Watts House is having spirit tasting. So we hope to have some boards, a little activity, an associate, my associate Lauren Scott will be there. We're hoping that, that we might have some committee members there as well. So I don't know if Isaac's already approached anyone on that. And then we'd look for another event early November. Again, sort of coinciding with the survey, so we can direct people to that. More ideas, more questions for you. If you have the time, please do this. Not everybody will, but it'll, again, it's a way to kind of get the word out and possibly some folks clicking on that survey as well. So if you have ideas about that, where we could kind of make a, a little presentation, have some boards available, that would be good.
Go ahead, Bo.
Oh, sorry. Response rate was okay. But then there's another one right on top of it and it's the same. I hope that we can reach, maybe go out to Veterans Park on a weekend. I mean, it's packed. I think we need to have boots on the ground here a little. If you have a wine tasting, it'll be. And maybe we could, I think we could maybe take some of this truck for you guys. Take that or whatever and go to one park or something. I don't want to speak for everybody, but I'm small. But that's just an idea.
One thing about, let's see, when is the Christmas lighting?
Yes, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay, yeah, so that would be something, there's a Christmas lights out here on the lawn. There are lots of family, like most of Skapu shows up for that. So that might be a wonderful event for us to.
It's like the first Monday in December.
Yeah. And, and we, we would reach a definite, a different crowd, different, different groups. I mean, I think, I definitely think outreach into the, the family. It is nice, though, to be able to reach like different groups, like people without kids, people with kids, teenagers.
Well, I was gonna say, they probably will be hosting a football game. I didn't, I.
So the timing is a little bit curious and I'm, I can appreciate the fatigue aspect. And, you know, the, the challenge of sort of running a tight, a tight program so that, you know, you actually can have a, a plan within. Certain amount of time and we have enough time to do kind of the technical work behind it. So, you know, if you kind of look at the, the schematic of, of sort of the process. We kind of want to get that feedback early on before we start like, hey, this, this is who you are. These are the policies, you know? So we, we could do that in a vacuum without that public kind of input. But that's sort of the driver of, of getting the, the outreach piece early in the process. So the, the Christmas lighting is a little late for that. That doesn't mean that you can't still have that activity and we can be giving, you know, folks. Other information at that point in time potentially. I wouldn't ever discourage, you know, having that conversation and getting feedback. But for the process, it'd be better to have that earlier on. I, I really like the idea of, of getting an event that's, that sooner in November. The other thing too is if people, people aren't fatigued, they could be persuaded to go to the, the survey and, and actually. You know, provide more feedback that way as well, so. And also to your point about, you know, taking the materials we develop and, you know, taking, taking them on the road, if you will. Or visiting other parks where there are activities happening. I think that's a really great idea. So, you know, the, the spirit tasting may be, you know, one of those handoff, you know? If there are volunteers and you can kind of hear, you know, how we would engage or get some ideas of how to, you know, bring people in and encourage them to participate. Well, I've probably done many, many of the DOT exercises in your, your lives. So this is not going to be, you know, particularly complicated, but yeah, we, we should definitely figure out a way to do that. The other thing also is, you know, we're intending on putting those graphics, you know, mounting them on boards. But, you know, the city may also have some funding to get those printed off in multiples. So you could have something up at the library and it could be static and it could be just available. But then you could take something to, you know, the Little League game and, and play for Little League. And have that more interactive. So we can talk with Isaac about that and see what we can get going because it is coming up fast. At least sort of how we've phased it. The, the other reason, and I don't want to feel like I'm pushing like, yeah, we gotta get going, yeah, we're on a timeframe. We are trying to fit in with the fifty year. Look, and I know that there is urgency for that level of service analysis related to the parks. And also the look about where, where you'll be growing, where you'll be planning for growth in that timeframe. So I've already got that word from Alexandra that we're, we're trying to match up. And there's a kind of a pivotal point there with this early work.
That makes.
I just want to say, have a good evening, everyone.
Happy birthday, Mike. Have a good night.
Happy birthday, Mike.
Me too. And just that last bullet there is, is there is also a, a planned check-in with city council and planning commission. Making sure that everyone's on, knowing what we're up to and ask any questions about, you know, what, what we've developed so far in the process, etc.
I think that sounds good. I think, I mean, we do have the ability and the desire to like, to help out. So if you think of things or, or if there's additional things that can happen within the October, November timeframe. Like, we, we can do it, we can, I can definitely be at the spirit tasting. And so I, I think that if, if there are opportunities, we, we can be there for it.
Careful, thank you. That, that concludes my portion.
What other means have you used that will, that have been effective for you? Like, so for instance, would it be just small cards with the QR code on it? That we would go to a game and, or like to a park and we'd say, hey, there's a big park survey coming? It's on here or, I mean, because obviously we'd like to do more of the DOT thing. But since you're so time constrained, is there other things that you have used in the past that we could possibly utilize in this, you know, time period?
Yeah, definitely. I'm going to get together with the team tomorrow, both on the survey as well as our upcoming level of service analysis. And I will, I will query. I know that you have, I, I don't know that the city has, I guess I'm not sure about the newsletter, if it's print or if.
It's, it's, it's both, it's digital and print. So it goes out to everybody who gets a water bill. So everybody who pays a utility bill gets one, some folks don't. So apartment, people who are in apartments have always been very difficult to reach. There's some communities that have like a HOA and that pays the water bills. They've been hard to reach historically. So what we try to do is we, we use the newsletter directly to the, to those folks who get a water bill. We post online, we post on the Facebook page, make it available throughout the city at various, like post office, city hall lobby. So when we have done surveying like this in the past, we've done a variety of like, we'll hand out paper surveys. We'll try to take stacks of them to Spring Lake. We've had difficulty getting in there, but if somebody has a contact, that would be great. They haven't always been very accepting of our stacks of surveys.
I can help you with that.
Thank you. We can certainly do cards with the QR code. We have card stock, we can make that happen, pretty low budget. We can create, we can do paper surveys to hand out and take with if people want to do it right there on pen and paper. But that's kind of how we've operated. We've been leaning towards the QR code thing a little bit more, but not excluding other ways. Because we've had, as you've seen, difficulty getting response. So we've really tried to be as broad as possible.
The other thing we need to talk about as well is how, how long to have that survey up. Again, kind of looking at what, what's coming up and what's really, what, what are those responses? How are they going to inform, you know, what we're, what we're up to next? I think is that's the, the pivotal point as well as, you know, having a survey up for too long is not really that beneficial. You know, you can tell when you get the results back that there's a big bump, right? When it comes out and then it kind of trickles off. And if there's another event or, you know, someone really pushes hard and distributing it, distributing it, you'll see another bump. But on its own, it has its sort of limited lifespan as well. So we'll get some more information back as far as a real, a strategy and, and listing your help and, and where events would be. Where it'd be fruitful for you to be at events or at certain parks. We, I think we pulled that together with staff's help, sure.
Thank you. Brandon.
Can I? I would just like to say, I support Paul's idea on doing what I would call is intercept surveys. So we're meeting folks where they're at to understand what their needs are. So I think those conversations become more valuable at times because those are our user groups. You know, the timeframe is a challenge, right? But if we were to look at just meeting with people, putting it maybe the local youth basketball programs, they may be starting up. So they host games on a Saturday. I know that the wrestling club just started up with their programs. Thinking about events that are going on with those, thinking about age groups, the demographics that we're trying to see. But as though is the survey, one is it qualitative or quantitative? And the idea, are we asking for people's kind of emotional connection to these spaces? Or are we looking for only basketball courts? So I think that maybe having a variety of different questions so that the survey doesn't become such a concern. That it's more about, what are those verbal connection points that we're hearing and trending and the responses that we're getting? I do think that that's a different way that we could approach some of the survey. I think getting the link or the QR code is, is one way. But I think people will be consistent of it. We want people to be, right? That's kind of the problem that I think. I do appreciate what you've brought to us, Darcy, a good starting point. A master plan will be a guiding line for us moving forward. There'd be a five-year plan and a twenty-year plan, supporting even a fifty-year plan down the line. So that this will be a guiding path.
You, Brandon. It is after seven. Oh, one, one moment, Kim. It's after seven, so do I have a motion to adopt continuing the meeting past seven?
Motion to adopt.
Have a second? All in favor, say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Kim, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, thank you. So I think we are all lining, aligning around this, this strategy, which I think we've employed for the fifty-year plan. So we worked with Isaac to put together a toolkit for people who were onsite engaged in activities to gather some information. Which is what I think Brandon is suggesting. We also had an online tool that we could deploy. And we have a really good stakeholder list, right? Like the, the list of stakeholders that we wanted to be engaging on an ongoing basis. We could send that to them, the survey, right? So we could kind of take a dual strategy on how to collect some of this data, which is what I would recommend.
Yeah, Darcy, were you able to see the list of the stakeholders that we have developed?
Yes, yes, I was.
I think that's a good idea, Kim, of circulating surveys directly to them so that they can put it within their groups. That's a great idea.
And as sort of a, another prong of, of your attack, engaging people. The survey, the stakeholder list, we, we asked staff to help us and then obviously you all to help as well. Kind of developed that to make sure that we were engaging folks that had a, had a unique perspective on the park system. Either by way of serving them, you know, you have emergency service providers, for example, you know, security at the parks, access to the parks, neighbors. So, you know, we do have some, some time scoped in the project for the consultants to, to do kind of a one-on-one or small group conversations. So that was what that list was for, for our purposes as consultants. But, but honestly, just for outreach, you know, yes, any, any list that you have that you can engage people and ask them to, to provide feedback and let them know the process is happening. So if they do have concerns or, or questions, or they just want to tell us something, you know, through you, through council, through whomever, through staff. That there's a, there's a conduit for that. That's all, all to the good. So I didn't cover the, the stakeholder interviews. Much more general set of questions even than what we're planning for the online survey. But honestly, those conversations will go where they want to go, right? The, the folks that we've engaged clearly will have something to, to share. That will be a unique perspective that we didn't know or that we would need to consider moving forward. So that's what's going to happen with that. And I'm, I'm working with Isaac and Huel to kind of schedule those. And again, we will, I don't know how to pronounce the name, the word, anonymize. We'll make sure that those are fairly, fairly anonymous. We won't say, oh, so-and-so said this. It'll just be kind of rolled up and this is what we heard. And that can be, you know, public information for sure. And it's, you know, it doesn't mean that we're going to a hundred percent go marching off in one direction. It's just going to be like, these are these concerns, we're going to take that into account. We're going to look at all the surveys, responses, take that into account, talk to city council, planning commission, take all that into account. So it's part of the, part of the process.
Great, thank you. Go ahead, Jen.
That's a great idea is how to do outreach. I'm just wondering, I guess, question for you to not to so much work on you, but yes, talk about how to strategize that and information in the committee and other staff. So you can talk a little bit about that.
Right, well, yes. I mean, what I, I guess what I was thinking was we have the spirits tasting and then once we get the survey information, we can talk more about how, how and when we could outreach and we could definitely send it to our stakeholders. Other thoughts?
I think, I think identifying events in the first two weeks, well, I don't think we'll have the materials ready, printed out and available until the spirit tasting. Otherwise I'd say, what's going on next week? So that is kind of a launch, if you will, and I know we've got the date, I know we've got the permission. I think we can get the materials there and I've got an associate who can go. So we're a go and all that and if you can be there, that's amazing. But the first two weeks of November, I think we need to identify those events and, and see who's available to like, yep, that's a good idea. The wrestlers are having their tournament, who can be there? What materials do you need? What support do you need, maybe from staff? So, yeah, so we do, we do need to have a, a strategy and we've kind of been poking at this really since late August. So it's really good to now kind of, I think, have a schedule and, and know that we're off and running. Yeah, let's, let's see if we can, see if we can come up with a, a, a strategy for, for you all. And then we can start plugging you in and. And then we can start plugging you in and see what your volunteer hours will allow you to do.
Great. I, do we have any additional comments or questions? Right. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we look forward to continuing this process. And, uh, when you have more information for us, we're, we are ready. Okay. Um, well, let's move on to city update.
So I noticed Casey's here and one of the agenda items for the city update is the Crown Z signage. Um, I don't know if you have anything you want to add. Feel free. Of course, you don't have to.
Well, I mean, I'm going to talk to, uh, the, uh, city council meeting. If we, it might open up a little before then, but, uh, I have a presentation. Um, I'll watch the. I roll and potentially other sponsors. That'd be great. So see.
Okay. Uh, you also received the letter that we received, um, mid Oc, well, it's early October, uh, between meetings. Um, we obviously didn't have a chance to get for you and show you it or to tell you about it until now. And the deadline was previous to today. So we kind of had to move on that. Um, were there any questions about that letter? I don't know.
Thank you for getting that out to us in between meetings. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the letter?
Um, basically on M, the last couple of months, the last month has been like a bonus summer. So we've been doing a lot of mowing. Um, once the, once ground gets wet, it's really hard to get the mowers out there. They tend to sink and get stuck. So, uh, focus on parks has mostly been continuing mowing, keeping them looking pretty. Um, right now there's not anything really in the works that I know of for development. Um, I haven't heard anything about the zip line, one way or the other. I think that's kind of, um, put on pause for now. I'm not really a focus. I think we're really taking the time that the admin staff down there has to work on the parks master plan work. So that's kind of where things are at with the parks. And then, uh, new bylaws were passed by council on Monday night. Um, I have paper copies here. I think I sent out, um, copies. I can answer questions about those. Um.
I just want to say a big thank you to council and for the city for listening to all of our feedback. I, they, I really appreciated all the changes and they were really, I, um, yeah, I liked it. Do we have any other feedback comments?
I would just second that. Um, I think, uh, I appreciate all the feedback, um, that this committee provided during the process and, uh, appreciate the fact that it was considered and then reflected in the new changes. I'm pretty happy with, uh, where things stand.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that was, I think that ended up being like a really positive. And so I was, it was, it was good to see the discussions and, um, and especially I was at the council meeting with all discussions. And so I know that all the council members and the mayor put a lot of thought and a lot of discussion and heard all of us. And so that was, I really appreciate that.
So the one thing I would note is that, uh, one of the things that was passed was that, uh, the committees will submit, uh, semi-annual reports to council. So one of those coming up on December, I believe it's the 12th.
Okay.
Um, so we'll need, if you're going to write anything, we prefer it in writing anyways, so we can give it to council, I think.
Right.
Um, doesn't have to be particularly long. I can email you after and get you the details and it can be you, you or your designee. But that's coming up for the first one. Um, that's as we get into goal setting. And on that note, um, I know sometimes committees cancel their December meeting because of the holidays. And goal setting is something we have to get done by the end of December so that we can get those recommendations to council. They have time to work on those. Staff has time to consider them and get them into the retreat, um, in that setting. Um, so for EDC, they decided to do their goal setting, start their goal setting in November, in case they wanted to cancel the summer meeting. Um, I don't know if that's the case here, but I just want to mention that we, we do need to do that.
Um, I already had feedback from most of the committee members regarding the goals that they would like to have. So I will bring that to the committee next.
So you wanted to schedule for the next meeting?
November, yeah. Um, I mean, everyone pretty much said the same thing. So I don't think, it should not be lengthy.
Right.
Um, because I, we, since the bulk of our year will be master planning.
Yeah. So next meeting will also be round two of the master plan work. We consider tack number two. Um, so we'll kick off again with, um, MIG back with more information and, uh, kind of go from there.
Would it be, um, so considering the, the by, the bylaws that we're following, like, would it be appropriate for me to send out like just a master list of, um, what everybody has said?
Yeah, you can, you can send whatever you want between each other in documents.
Okay.
Links and for, hey, I found this, as long as there, you know, the responses are like not to the whole group.
Okay.
That's how the, can the serial communications are created. So you can send that out. Jeanette can send out a document. Um, we talked to an EDC about how that works, um, cause they're talking about the economic opportunities analysis, which came out this week and how they can talk about it or converse without conversing about it.
Right.
Because that's due on November 1st. Feedback on that's due very quickly and they won't have another meeting. And so it's kind of a one-way communication. So I give a member was to send out, hey, I found this information. I think it's interesting. And everybody's on the same page on, oh yeah, we shouldn't respond. If you send something outside, here's this information. If you want to respond, please respond to me. I will collect the data.
Okay.
And then you can send, you can send, yeah.
So I will just send out an, uh, a master list of what everybody has sent to me. Like I said, it was pretty much all the exact same thing. So, um, that should make it streamlined and then we can go into November and mostly just approve our goals. Um, Kim?
Yeah. Uh, sorry if you guys discussed this before I joined. I was five minutes late and I apologize for that. I'm at a conference and running from meeting to meeting. But, um, when are we going to talk about Grabhorn?
So that's on this agenda.
Night.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess any more general questions for the city?
Are we ready to talk about Grabhorn? Perfect timing. Okay. Um, all right. So we got three, um, conceptual plans. Um, one was, uh, very similar to the one without the pool. That, uh, has the parking lot on the left-hand side closer to Grabhorn. With a soccer and softball field and, uh, one was, had incorporated disco, disc golf, basketball court and pickleball court. And then one had, um, the combined softball and soccer, um, leaving space for a potential new court in the future. So, um, let's hear everyone's.
Do you want to go through plan by plan?
Sure, we can do that.
Cause I think for navigating this and keeping the discussion about each particular concept and for feedback to staff that will get transmitted to council, I think it'll be more salient to do it one by one.
Perfect. Let's do it.
One, so what are we looking at here? Are these engineering drawings?
These are basic conceptual drawings. So these are base engineered. So we know where the wetlands are. We know where slope is. We have looked generically at the cut fill in various areas to say, here's what's possible. We've looked at the parking needs because for certain, we did the math on sporting events and a soccer, a soccer match or two soccer matches back to back can generate 300 people, which is a hundred and fifty cars average. Um, you gotta have a place to have people do that. Um, so it's, it's a very basic level of engineering. Um, enough to say this is potentially possible. The locations of these things would change. There would have to be some minor modification of various items, but not, not enough that would impact the overall picture of the park. So if, if, you know, we took this concept and five years later or two years later, it's reality. It will look very, very close to this, but not exact. So these are, these are kind of how we work through what amenities should be there, what, what the committee would like to see, what council would like to see. And then when we get to the point where there's agreement, then we'll go out and search for that 10% design that will allow us to get the kind of grants we need to build something like this.
Is there budget numbers for each design?
There are not.
Not, is there even consent, like just, no, none. Okay.
No, and I, you know, you're not the first person to ask. Kim did ask me that as well. Um, and that again, would come in a little later in the process, once we kind of nail down. And a, that's something you could ask for. I mean, that's, that's part of why we're here is to talk about this stuff. So if that's something you want, you know, we pass this stuff to council, council hears that, maybe they want more information too. I, I don't know. I'm not a policymaker.
And the third question is, um, all three show the utilities, uh, on a road or semi-road, whatever. But then where does it go? Is it going to go right through the dog park? And is it, I mean, what happens?
Dead end. So this, this access drive is, is a dead end. Um.
Well, does the, does the, I mean, is there, those going to continue?
Utilities will have to go underground. So what they're going to do is they will continue along this path, go underneath the dog park through here, underneath this house, and it'll connect right here. Cause there is a sewer, water, et cetera, connection right at this corner. And we're going to connect this all the way across here for redundancy.
Okay. So, um, it, will that be a large, uh, will the dog park will be out of commission for a long period?
It depends on what they do. So sometimes they will be able to, um, bore underneath. Sometimes they'll have to come in and excavate and lay. But I do know that, um, from my understanding of what I've been told by the city managers, those utilities have to go in. Um, so if we do have to dig the dog park out, if we have to take out part of it, some of it would be out of commission for a while, possibly, most likely. And then we would be putting it back to where it was.
Thank you.
But there's no future plans for that road to continue through?
At this point, no, no. So that, that access drive is simply an access drive. Um, part of it is that you, with the utilities is they, they really need to be protected from weight from above. Um, so when we have something like this where we need parking, you know, we, we can't do, we can't do gravel because it's outside of planning and development code. We're not allowed to have a gravel road. So we have to have a paved surface. And if we had cars running across it, it would damage the utilities over time. So the part of that road surface is protection. Um, contrary to this, you'll see this plan, which is like the low impact version of the park. There is not really an access drive. It, it says access drive, but it's, it doesn't, you know, it's, it's not paved to the same kind of standards. Um, it's just dead ends. It's, it's a way to protect it, a way for us to get in there and access if we need to. But at this point, there's no plans to continue that access past the property line of the Grabhorn property. So because of that, that's why, that's part of why these couple, these first two designs, you're seeing a parking lot or the fields in this area is that we, we already have to put in this protective surface that we already have to pave some of this area to protect. And so in, in terms of space usage, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to do something like that and then not put anything on it. Cause you couldn't have a soccer field on it. You couldn't have people walk on it or stand on it. You couldn't have ban, you know, grandstands. You couldn't have stuff on top of those utilities. So it's kind of just open space. Um, so that's kind of how we got some of the space savings for design number two, where we were able to kind of separate out the fields was that we were able to utilize that space as parking or as an access to parking we might not otherwise be able to do.
And just because I'm, I think maybe playing a little catch-up, um, the amenities that we see, the park features.
Yep.
Those been, I looked at and agreed upon that those are going to be what's included in here?
Yeah. So that's a great question. This has been a almost two-year process now. Um, about a year ago, uh, the city, so the city acquired this property in spring-ish of 2020. And, um, at the direction of the then city manager, we went and we created a conceptual plan, brought it to council. And there were some concerns from the community about the process that went through. And there was, uh, a struggle of values and a struggle of community wants and wishes. And council said, whoop, we're going to pause this. We're going to go back and we're going to take what we have. We're going to send it out to a specific committee, does partly parks committee, partly other community members. Get everybody together and talk about this plan. Um, and so for the next six months or so, um, this committee and other additional members went over the plan. They talked about what the needs of the community were. They did some surveying work. Um, they looked at, um, master plans. They looked at the needs and came up with a list of recommendations to council to, for amenities for this property. And council took those, those recommendations in and they sent it back to staff and said, we're going to accept all these recommendations. We want you to go ahead and redesign, re-conceptually design this property to include these amenities. Um, and this is kind of where we are is, um, a couple of the things that happened also were, um, there was a quest for a wetland delineation to occur on the site. So we knew where those were before we got to this design work. And, um, the other thing was that there's a line of trees on the private property just west of the Grabhorn property. There were some concerns about the root zones and protecting those trees for the long period. So there was, uh, work there about, um, where to locate and how far away construction could be in relation to the trees, um, which is also part of why there's only the surface of the road there and, and nothing else. Um, is that, you know, well, the utilities have to go so far under, um, we're trying not to disturb that area in the cut fill balance, which is, are you familiar with cut fill? Excellent. So there's a lot going on in this site. I would highly suggest maybe walking out there and taking a look. It's really cool, but there's, there's a lot of different aspects that make this challenging, more challenging than it looks at first blush. I don't know. But the committee, of course, please feel free. I'm not the only person in this room.
Um, with regards to, um, the soccer and softball fields, uh, when we had the Grabhorn ad, just to catch everybody up if we weren't there. Um, when we had the Grabhorn ad hoc committee, um, we, we discovered some things regarding softball. And that was, um, particularly during the pandemic, the, the softball team uses the school fields. During the pandemic, the school closed all the fields and so women were disproportionately impacted by not having access to fields while, um, baseball players had access to city-owned fields that were not closed. Um, so they came to us in hopes that we could have a city, um, a city-run softball field. Um, in addition to those teams, there's also potential for recreational pickup teams and things like that, that we don't have access to right now. So more adults can actually be participating in these sports. Um, there's also, um, some challenges with the soccer fields. Many of them are soggy. Um, and so throughout most of the playing time, so the hope was that we could have dedicated city-owned soccer field. Um, that was hopefully, um, turf, potentially turf, um, with lights, um, to extend the playing season on this field. So that's, that is how we came up with, um, those two fields for this particular park. We'd also hope that if there were space, if there was extra space, that we could do, um, pickleball or basketball courts, which I believe leads to the other design, which is a little bit lower impact. Um, which I also appreciate, um, because I know that we have had significant feedback from the neighbors with concerns to having sport fields in their backyards. Um, and then we also have the watershed that we are working to protect. So, um, having an option for a low-impact field with the pickleball, disc golf and basketball, which then hits into some other demographics. For maybe people in their leg, you know, fifteen to seventy who can play disc, disc golf. Um, so that, and same thing with pickleball. Um, so that, that also feeds into some other demographics. Um, the challenge is not having, um, I, the challenge is that, that wasn't our recommendation um, uh, from the Grabhorn council, um, because that would ultimately still leave softball and soccer without a place to play. So it is two good examples, but go ahead.
Um, so there's a hand online. And then I also want to just make sure that we don't need to cover any back, more background.
Yes, okay. Um, go ahead.
Yeah. So, uh, no, I think, um, Kara, your comments set mine up perfectly. Um, there was an identified need for more sports playing fields. Um, but since our recommendations were put in, I do believe the school district has updated their plan for the next 10, 20 years. Um, and so I think we need to maybe renegotiate. You know, what is their plan for having sports fields? Um, especially as they're transitioning the middle school to more of, you know, on the other side of the highway and having more of like a, you know, school complex. And then maybe that leaves the middle school open to fields. So does that change then our conceptual plan for this one? Uh, my second point would be, uh, you know, I would perhaps like to see if we are going to stick with sports fields in this space. Um, you know, maybe another alternative where the parking lot, as shown in rendering two, I believe it is with the disc golf, is on the north side of the field. Um, could we have the sports fields pushed farther south? Keep the parking on the north side, save the cost of a road going through, have hardscaping paths perhaps for ADA. Um, as just kind of another option. Yeah, that one, you know, so instead of all of the disc golf store stuff, if we have to go with sports fields because the school district, we find that what they're planning for is not adequate and we still need to provide for that. Um, we put those sports fields in, but keep the parking closer to the road. And another function of that is, um, I've, yeah, my kids play soccer. We go to Hillsborough all the time. Um, it's really uncommon to find soccer fields bumped right up against the road for a number of safety reasons, right? Uh, you don't want balls kicked in the field. You don't want, or sorry, into the road. Um, so I would, I would suggest. Um so I would, I would suggest that uh we maybe go with a different rendering if we're sticking with the sports field.
Go ahead.
Infiguration.
Yep. Yeah, so the wetlands there are to tell us how much wetlands we have to mitigate. Um so we don't, we haven't gotten any information because we haven't submitted a DLCD to say, how do we need to mitigate this stuff? Um but it does tell us what we can and can't have. So yeah. Yeah, I, well, first, do you need any more background? Are you, other questions you have?
No, no, I, I think I'm good on the background.
Okay, excellent. You know, that's one of the interesting things from the city side is, you know, tonight we heard from Darcy that part of this master planning is like doing a needs assessment. You know, a real full-blown, look at the whole city, look at all the demographics, try to get out there and figure out what the needs are. And I, I personally wonder how that might impact this. So I'm not a decision maker. I'm not even a recommender. But I'm interested to see how these things align because, you know, over time, we've gone from, you know, a number of amenities. We pulled the pool for various reasons. We pulled this. We added pickleball. We added, you know, basketball and, you know, it's kind of, it's been evolving.
I, I completely agree. I mean, I think with the learning about like how the school district is updating their fields, I mean, I think we really need to prioritize our, our properties. And so if we have the opportunity, I know the biggest concern that I, I know Mike, that Mike has addressed is, is the grant. Um missing out on the grant, taking too much time.
So.
Uh if we could potentially save a lot of money by not having to put in extra fields, um where, or we can partner more with the school district, then that, that might be more prudent of our dollars.
So I'm gonna address the grant really quick.
Okay.
We, we actually looked at it. We have till twenty twenty-six, May of twenty twenty-six to submit for the grant.
Yeah.
So we have plenty of time.
Wonderful, okay.
When you're looking to get three-quarters of a million from a very small grant pool of two million, there's a lot of scrutiny and you really have to bring your A-game. Not to say that we can't, but just to say that at this point, this kind of a design is not ready yet.
Okay.
They'll, they'll actually look at the history. They'll go back all the way to pre-Grabhorn and look at this particular project and look at what happened and where we're at to make sure that like they want to spend to the third of their grant money on this project. And so we, on the city side, really want to be prepared.
Perfect.
We do have plenty of time.
Okay.
And given uh the fact that we are trying to learn from past experience, you know, we really aren't looking to rush this. We want to make sure it's right.
I appreciate that. Paul, did you have a comment?
Well, I agree with everything that Kim said. Um and we have certain data that we know that citizens have asked for. Um but at the same time, we have all these variables changing. And I'd like to request that can we go back to council and say that at this time, we'd like to wait for the park master plan to be completed before we go move forward to on Grabhorn?
Um I, do we have any thoughts or comments on that?
First, yes, you can. I know that council has been in talking about that as well as, you know, the parks master plan is really important. That's going to guide how this park system develops. So I'd, I would guess that they might be interested to hear that recommendation.
Especially considering we have two thousand twenty-six.
Yes.
Go ahead, JJ.
I think that's a really good point, Paul. I mean, we need to um the, the, the master plan, and, and I'm especially interested in the, the funding strategy that the uh uh that the consultants are gonna be providing, will really, you know, give us a bearing on, on what we can and can't do. Um but I also think it's important to reach out to the schools and see how we can partner with them regarding uh fields and, and, you know, things that citizens need.
Okay. Um yeah.
I, I agree as well.
Yep. Hey, Brian?
Um on this side here, I noticed that there's a big gap right there. I, I thought maybe reducing the size of that lower parking lot, but right above that stormwater facility, is that big open square. Didn't they squeeze in the pickleball court there too and add, so you'd have three different places?
It's possible. I mean, I think that, that the, when we, when we talked with them about this, we said, you know, we have a lot of asks on this property. It, it's, you know, twelve acres, thirteen acres, whatever it is. It sounds like a lot. When you get out there and you walk through it, it sounds like a lot. You start laying things out and it's not. And so we asked them to use the space as best as they could. And I think part of that is to provide just some green space to offset all the parking. And but, you know, that could develop. I mean, you, you could put theoretically a pickleball there and really fill it in to make a sports complex in that area. That's perfectly possible.
If they're worried about the infills, like maybe just reduce the parking lot down that one corner.
Yeah, the parking numbers we used, you know, we, we kind of threw them together. We said, okay, so here's how many, you know, soccer team for U thirteen is this many folks, and it's probably gonna be one car per kid, maybe, you know, twenty percent carpool. So if you have them on site and you have another team that size coming, plus you add some people coming to watch, here's how many cars you might have for a soccer game. So that kind of generates parking numbers of saying, you need to probably have this kind of amount of parking in, in perspective vicinity, and there's just no street parking in that area. Um so I think that's kind of where the parking lot was at, wa, was, you know, how much do we need to be able to bring people in? Yeah, so we did. And actually, that upper lot that people park on that's grass, we actually need to, to pave that. Um it's, it's really hard to maintain. If we don't maintain it, it gets gravelly and dirty. Um it messes up people's cars. And so when you pay, take a spot like that and pave it, you actually reduce the parking spaces. So we did consider that. And because there's those other fields there, there's a very good possibility that those few, if, if this came to fruition, you could have three or four games at once. And so we did consider, and we're, you know, we're trying to reduce the impact because the next logical place is parking up in that neighborhood that just west of that's right now. And, and, you know, we've heard multiple times, folks are already concerned. So it's balancing out, you know, we don't want to just pave everything and make it parking, but we also don't want to have, you know, neighbors really upset because people are parking all over in their neighborhood all the time and trying to balance out those competing priorities is sometimes difficult.
Ian, you have a question?
That's, um I was asking if that road has a future of pugging through because it would make the park a lot more accessible in busy times to be able to drive from parking lot to parking lot to find a spot versus having to literally five-minute route to get to the other side.
Yes, there, there is definitely a whole history about that road. Um I will be happy to share with you the archive that comes through that.
Yeah, since this conversation's been had.
Yes.
It was, there was, it was a very difficult conversation between the community and the city. Um, you know, we've never hit that we're in favor of the road. We'll say it every day. And it's, it's not personal. It's just for connectivity, for the utilities, staff as, as technocrats are in favor of the road. The community was very against the road. Um and so there was a very large struggle over whether that particular amenity needed to be there or not. And at this point, um after the discussions with the community and council, uh the decision was that there is not gonna be a through road at this time.
Okay, well then, I have a few comments. I just wanna jump into them.
Yeah.
Option one and three, they do have the parking on what would be the south end of the parking or the park itself. Um like if we look at it globally, you know, my idea is, is along with veterans, is gonna create a larger community park on. It's not gonna be. Might be two in name, but it's gonna be one in reality. Having that large parking lot is gonna literally cut off the park visually from north to south. Um but I can see why they put it there because it's closer to the fields over veterans parks. You don't have to walk what would probably be like seven hundred, eight hundred feet if you did park on the far north side. Um our parking on the far north side makes more sense because of the soccer field being right up tight against the road. You're gonna need a very large fence. We make that a safe situation. Um and then I would also ask uh those who are in charge of this, what is this park in option one and three? Really, option one mostly, but what is it bringing to the table that Veterans Park doesn't already do?
Are you talking with regards to like the softball fields?
Just any amenity out here.
Okay.
Know that we need more softball.
Yeah.
Not bringing anything to the parks system in a whole scenario there. It's adding to, but it doesn't have, for instance, I don't see any picnic shelters. Um I do see some pickleball, I see a single pickleball court, which if you're gonna build one, you might as well build three for a community like that. Uh you'll get way more cost benefit. One basketball court, these are both an option three, I believe. So those are bringing something that veterans doesn't, but we're gonna look at this as a community park, really just doubling up. Um so I would challenge whoever is in charge of it to put something in those two options. I do see covered play, or not covered play, future sports courts. That's pretty important there. I would challenge that to be covered. Um but, you know, what more can we bring in here? That's why I asked a question earlier about what amenities have been agreed upon and move forward in the process now.
Yeah, I, I think at this point, what I kind of heard from everybody in the committee is that there's a lot of interest in kind of pushing pause on this, on this particular design work. Um I think that what, what I'm hearing them say is that they heard that the consultant's gonna be doing some pretty strong looking at this community and what the needs are, what the real needs are. I mean, we've tried in the past.
Right.
It's, it's very difficult, but, but actually looking and aggregating the data and, you know, getting professional survey analysts and data analysts to come in and look and say, hey, okay, so here's what all these things say, and then here's what you really, what the community's saying it needs. And waiting for that to come back. Because the thing is that the grant is tied to the land and the land's tied to the grant. But whatever goes on that property is not tied to either one of those things at the moment. It's still, besides what's in our heads about this and what we've talked about for two years, it's still a blank slate.
Um I would, I would agree. And I, and we, we have chosen these things. We have discussed these things um because of feedback and community surveys and everything that we've received back. And like, and particularly like when we're looking at the sports fields, the baseball fields could not be a substitute for the softball fields. And so that was something that, again, we were bringing to the community um as a result of not being able to offer that.
That, that said, that, that conversation about working with the school district has been something that the city's been trying to have for a while.
Absolutely, I.
And it's, it's just kind of ratcheting up every time we discuss this property.
Yeah.
It comes up a little bit more.
Yeah.
A little bit more about how, I mean, okay, I'll be honest. I went on Google Maps today to look for something for the city work. And I happened to see and count the number of baseball and or softball fields.
Right.
And there's currently eight. I'm not gonna, you, you, you can go verify it. Again, I'm not a decision maker. I'm just a data person. I found eight. That's, that's, that's a large number of those facilities. It's just some people have difficulty accessing them equally to other groups, and it makes it challenging for them to feel like they have access. And so working on those relationships.
I, I completely agree. Um and I think that was a conversation that we attempted to have multiple times during the Grabhorn process. It was kind of like, okay, we needed to come up with a decision so we can apply for this grant. And so we felt like that's where we needed to go. Um I actually really like this layout. Um I think it's, I think there's a lot in it. Um and so I personally am in full support of putting this on pause um and bringing this back. Um and, and waiting until we can have greater conversations with the school district. Go ahead.
Um I was on the committee to build veterans. At the time, it was softball, baseball. I didn't realize that softball doesn't all the time.
Yeah.
It's all it's filled we ever had in St. Louis.
Yes.
And so we played on growth, but when we got this, it was like, wow, we finally get two main fields. We've always offered to turf them, and anybody who plays softball, baseball, that's still always an option.
Yeah.
You need softball and you decide not to put it there. Everybody, they have like eight softball tournaments there. Um it's just whether it's grass, they don't want to play.
I think.
This, this isn't, I didn't know that.
We offered a hundred thousand dollars to the city to turf them.
Well, I. Um well, I think that, I think that we have enough information that tells us that we should put this process on hold.
Yeah, and I'll also say that, you know, we've been speaking with the consultant and they, they didn't want to talk about this tonight because they don't have the data, but they do suspect that they'll have, and we suspect that they'll have some information about this property. I mean, they're considering it, right, as part of the system.
They are.
I suspect though that this will come up more naturally as we go through the parks process. Um in terms of tonight, uh I don't know if you wanted to make a recommendation to council to say, hey, we think that we should kind of push pause on this for now.
Okay.
Just kind of symbolically tell everybody like.
All right. Do I have, I, I will do a motion. Do we have a motion to um put the Grabhorn process on hold and send it back to council um in an effort to gain, gather more information uh during our master planning process? Have a second?
That motion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wonderful. Um Kim, you have your hand raised?
Uh I did have my hand raised to just make all of those same points, so we're good.
Earth wonderful, okay. Um next meeting, November seventeenth, I will send out an email regarding our um goals. Please just reply to me individually. Um but hopefully that way we can just walk in with a nice streamlined process, say aye and move on. So um any questions or any additional uh comments? Hopefully uh others can make it to the spirit night. It was October twenty-eight, six to eight. Um but that will give us a good understanding of how, I think, uh how their process will go. And then we can, we can also brainstorm that um for any November opportunities. So um.
You could also assign somebody to help with outreach generally for this. That way they can speak with you and staff and not create a public meeting that make an interface with people.
Well, I think I would love to have Paul for that, but I, he's not here, so I won't assign it to him when he is not here. But yeah, that's a great idea. Let me, let me write that down. And then other than that, any, anything else for tonight? Or JJ, would you be interested in that?
Yeah, I could certainly help with that. I uh, I do have the ability to reach a lot of people.
Well, fantastic. I will, I will um send out an email to you and Paul and, and we can go from there.
Great.
Great, thank you.
Uh-huh. Oh, just a, just a quick note. When they were talking about the library, obviously I'm pretty connected with the library as well. As you are, now that your son's a published author. So, so uh, uh, you know, Jeff has really got a lot. The uh, the, the library Facebook page gets a lot of hits.
Okay, yeah. No, I think we should have, um I definitely think that when we get information, we should, that should be part of our outreach for sure is um trying to get as much sharing as possible on as many social medias as possible, for sure.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, great. Thank you, JJ. Okay, everyone? That is all. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.